Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today is May 15, 2017, and this is the final night of the 2017-2018 Board of Alderman Budget Deliberations. Will everyone please join me as we salute our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited, just for all.
Is there a motion to take, come out of recess?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion been made in seconds, come out of recess, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? We're out of recess. Madam Secretary, will you please take the roll? Well, seemingly our secretary's not there. Madam S. City Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Sure. Alderman Anderson?
Present.
Alderman Beatty?
Present.
Alderman Bevan?
Here.
Alderman Beer?
Alderman Casey?
Here.
Alderman Gorman? Alderman Genitazio?
Here.
Alderman Golden?
Here.
Alderman Grant?
Here.
Alderman Hardiman?
Here.
Alderman Shaw?
Here.
Alderman Smith?
Here.
Alderman Vecarelli?
Here.
Alderman Vitale?
Here.
Thirteen present, we have a quorum.
We have thirteen present, we do have a quorum. Tonight is the final step in the budget process. I'd like to thank the mayor, the department heads, the finance director and his staff, as well as the Board of Finance, Dr. Fieser and her staff, and the Board of Education. I'd also like to thank the members of the Board of Aldermen who have put in many days and hours considering this budget. Each year, we need to do the hard work to understand all the needs and wants of the city and each department, as well as the 54,000 citizens in Milford. The Board needs to find balance between our citizens, students, and senior citizens, and adopt a budget that's in the best interest for the entire city. Given the state of Connecticut's budget problems, this year is particularly challenging for Milford to identify what state revenue our city should expect. Despite the same, we will adopt a prudent and responsible budget which yields the best results for our city. At this point, we will start our deliberations with the first departmental budget. Board of Aldermen on page 14 of the budget books. Alderman Vecarelli, please begin with the Board of Alderman budget.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Genitazio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This meeting was earmarked to be an informative meeting. Now, I see that you're anxious to start voting on the budget, but there's more information that we have not gotten. We were supposed to see alternative budgets, hear from department heads. This final budget meeting was scheduled for the 25th. So, when I spoke to the mayor, the mayor assured me that we were going to start this meeting the way it was intended, and if there was ample time and all the questions were answered, then we were going to go into the budget vote. So, I just need some explanation and some clarification because it sounds like the chairman is ready to vote on the budget.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Genitazio. This, as we know, is a very difficult, challenging year. We don't have a lot of information from the state. Our budget process starts in October when I meet with all of our department heads, and the Board of Ed starts their deliberations as well, or at least their initial drafting of what is yet to come. Both my office and the Board of Education Administration put out their budget in January. This year, we put out a budget that was very conservative, very prudent, but we did not know that just a few weeks or a month later, the governor would come out with a budget that really did decimate or wallop probably 140 of the 169 towns and cities across the state. We have been pitted with very difficult news, challenging news. We met in early March with all of our department heads, as well as the Board of Education, to talk about alternative budgets, and as we discussed, we reviewed those alternative budgets and gave a copy to you. We did make sure that every single one of the Aldermen were electronically delivered and physically delivered a hard copy of the budget, so that if the electronic copy did not go through, that everybody would at least have a copy in their hands. The issue is, Peter and I met last week, if we do wait till the end of the month, the end of May, there are several difficulties that arise. As you know, we have a new tax collector. There are concerns with getting out the tax bills in a timely fashion if we wait till the end of the month instead of the middle of the month, and there are several other issues that are at play with waiting all the way to the 25th. However, as we did mention, our department heads are here. There's still some department heads that will be coming in a few minutes or within the next 20 minutes. Some of them had some prior conflicts, but they will be here to answer questions for a procedural matter. I think that is appropriate as, you know, to talk to the department heads while you're going through their budget. So, if we have a question for, and I'm not singling out anybody, but if we have a question for the Public Works Director or about the Public Works budget, I think that the, you know, appropriate time is to do it while we're discussing that particular set of line items, or the library, or the Board of Ed. You know, to talk to those department heads while we're going through their budget, it seems, from a procedural standpoint, to be the best, you know, the best possible time to discuss those budgets. You know, if there's concerns with that, if you have some questions that you need to get answered in advance, I'm certainly available now, or folks in our various departments are, but I think that, from a procedural standpoint, the best way to handle this is to talk to the budget that we're discussing, and invite those department heads up that we still have questions for. Again, the revisions or the adjustments that Peter and I are recommending that you folks had delivered to you last week, you know, it means a little bit of pain for each one of the department heads. You know, we had to be prudent. We had to make sure that we are addressing the political realities, that is, the 2017-18 budget. We don't know what we're going to get. I have gone up to Hartford and lobbied all of our state leaders up there, both in the executive and the legislative branch. Peter and I were there last week, meeting with the Senate President, and if you ask each one of the state leaders today what this budget is going to mean for Milford, what this budget is going to mean for the state of Connecticut, you'll get different answers from each one of them. There's not a lot of certainty. The only real certainty there is up in Hartford is that it is very, very, very unlikely that a state budget is going to be adopted by the end of the legislative session, which is the first Wednesday in June, and that's too late for us. If you look at all the other 169 towns in Connecticut, they're taking a different tact for their budgets. Most of them are looking to absorb the cost through rainy day funds. We're being a little bit more prudent, or at least, in my estimation, I think we need to do things above and beyond just wait to see what the state gives us, and that's why we have a budget alternative before you, based on the recommendations of the department heads. Peter and I sat down five or six separate times with our Board of Education Administration and had some meaningful discussions throughout the budget process. I think that when you talk to our superintendent and our COO of the school system, you'll hear that it was a process where we are all rowing in the same direction to make sure that the school system continues to move forward, and there is not a loss of any kind of education. Just like our city departments, we are looking to maintain the same fantastic services that we have in Milford. We are acknowledging that there's going to be some efficiencies and some pain throughout, but it's not going to public, it's not going to compromise the services in any meaningful way. It's not going to compromise the robust public safety that we have. So, this is a budget that, again, we are going to, you know, move forward to make sure that Milford continues to have a strong history and current way of budgeting and administering our budgets, but if there's concerns that you have, I think that they can be addressed as we go through each one of the different line items. If that's not something you think we're going to be able to accomplish tonight, then we're open for suggestions.
Mr. Chair, I have a quick question.
Alderman Casey?
Thank you. Through you to the mayor. I know you talked about some uncertainty, so I think the big component is the educational, the education cost sharing, and that was originally $11 million, 11.2 million, and now it's at 8.3. And I know you discussed the uncertainty. How do you arrive at the 8.3? How is that, is that an estimate, or is that, what's the basis for that, if you can explain that?
I've had many discussions with our state delegation, including our state senator, who's also the chair of the Education Committee and chair of the Subcommittee in Appropriations that writes and adopts the ECS grant. Again, there is still a lot of uncertainty up there, but I've been given assurances by our state delegation that while there may be some pain, it's going to be nowhere, nowhere close to what was put out there by the governor's budget. There's been alternative budgets that have been put out as well. There was a Republican caucus budget that was put out there that essentially holds us harmless from an ECS standpoint. There is a version of the Appropriations Committee budget that was put out there, which holds us harmless from an ECS standpoint. So, at the end of the day, talking to our legislative delegation, we do know that somewhere, maybe not in the ECS grant, but somewhere, there's going to be a haircut that we're going to experience from state revenue, but this is what we, this is what we've come to a conclusion, that is, the best estimate that we can, we have at this point.
And just to follow up through you, is there a worst-case scenario, though? Is there a budget that has us going back to zero, or is it just, there's the worst-case scenario? What's the worst-case scenario if you have, if there's one floating out there?
Well, the good news is that only about 6% of our overall budget revenue comes from the state of Connecticut, so I guess for any municipality out there, the worst-case scenario is the entire revenue that they get from the state. In our situation, it's about $15 million. I am pretty confident, based on our discussions with state delegation, that that's not going to be the case, but that would be, to your point, the worst-case scenario.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to the mayor. I appreciate the work that's been done, and I know we're harried all over the place, but I believe that this alternative budget should come after what we have discussed tonight. That was, that's my opinion. The fact is that, you know, it's almost paralleling what the state has done. Governor comes in with a unilateral decision, leaves the minority group out, presents a budget, and we don't have a possibility of even having any input to the, probably, the alternative budget. The cut on this budget is 1.2, approximately 1.2%, matching none of those alternative budgets that Alderman Genitazio indicated, 2, 3, and 5%. It comes out new, it's, to me, it's partisan, it's unilateral, and the fact remains that when we put our $5 million into this, out of this rainy day fund into our new taxes, it seems like we're double taxing. What went into that rainy day fund, that $5 million, was already taxed, but being taxed by the, by the public, and now we're taking it out and putting it in to create a new mill rate, which is going to be taxed again. So, you know, I find that incomprehensible, and I find that kind of, kind of not very transparent, but I think out of discussion tonight, which you had indicated, the fact remained that this was going to be purely informative, purely informative. We then would come up with numbers, and we'd come up with a percentage that we all agreed upon, and it would come out in a document as an alternative budget, but that's not, doesn't seem that's the way it's going. We're going to talk to our department heads. We're really going to get nowhere because of the fact that, you know, we're not going to be listened to, because obviously, the majority's going to have it all the way through, and I just think it's not fair. It's not fair that this has come out with added information. You caucused during the weekend, and I, we saw the caucus happening. You had information firsthand. We could have caucused, but what, if we caucused, what could we have caucussed on? Because we had no information other than it's a supposition that it's $8 plus million ECS. So, I think we have very little information to go on, and we're supposed to pass this at a win, and I think it's a win. We're going to bring up, we're going to bring up directors or department heads, and we're going to ask them, is this, can you live with this? Yes, we can live with it. Okay. And, but, but the point is, it doesn't match those alternative budgets that Alderman Genitazio was referring, the 2, 3, 5%. It's a 1.2% cut. Now, whether that's good or bad, I don't know, but the fact is, at least if we talk the game, we have to play the game. So, I just feel as though it's backwards, and it's not the first time that this has happened. We've done this, you know, it's the first time I remember it happening this way because the state wasn't in this predicament while I, in my tenure on the board. So, and I appreciate the work you've done. I appreciate all of the hard, the thought that goes into it, but I just think it falls short. So, thank you.
Thank you, and, Mr. Chair, through you to Alderman Vitale. Again, the recommendations that you were presented with last Friday are just that. They're suggestions on how to handle the budget. At the end of the day, at the end of this process, this is your decision. This is, the 15 members of this board are adopting this budget. I would be delinquent, my duties and responsibilities as mayor, as the person that coordinates and works with the department heads, not to give you suggestions about how to deal with what's happening with, at the state of Connecticut. If you want to throw out these suggestions wholesale, certainly, that's something that, you know, I'm not going to take offense, I'm going to lobby and advocate for these suggestions just because it meant a lot of time and work by our departments to reach these. This is something that Peter Aradisi has spent hours and days and weeks and months trying to get to you, something that is responsible, something that is prudent. Each one of our department heads, working with the members of their departments, same with the Board of Education, have spent hours and days and weeks and months trying to give you a good alternative to tackle what's happening from the state's loss of revenue. I'm not saying that this is, you know, the perfect, but we can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good here. This is the best budget that I think that we could pass tonight, and that's why it's being recommended to you. If there are adjustments, if there are wholesale adjustments, as long as you think that there's a way to make up for that shortfall, you know, I'm willing to work with you in any way, shape, or form.
Alderman Vecarelli?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the following budgets. Account number 4111, Board of Aldermen, as recommended by the Board of Finance, with the following changes. Account 47740000, postage reduced to $100 for a new department subtotal of $204, and a new department total of $6,205. Account number 4112, elections, as recommended by the Board of Finance, with the following changes. Account 47010000, election expenses to $1,007, $107,500, $107,500, for a new department subtotal of $107,500, and a new department total of $107,500. Account 4115, register of voters, as recommended by the Board of Finance, with the following changes. Account 41170000, seasonal temporary to $19,500 for a new department subtotal of $152,457, and a new department total of $165,065. Account 4116, MGAT, in the amount of $19,250, as recommended by the Board of Finance. And that's it for those accounts. We can take a...
We have a motion and seconded.
Mr. Chairman, we're going to take a five-minute recess, please.
We are out of recess. Alderman Frank Smith, would you like to withdraw your second?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, before the recess, the motion that was presented by the Majority Leader, I'd like to withdraw my second on that motion, please. Record show.
Thank you, Alderman Smith and Alderman Vecarelli. Would you like to withdraw your motion?
Mr. Chairman, yes, I would like to withdraw my motion.
Now, you have another motion to read?
Yes, I do. I move to approve the budget as recommended by the Board of Finance, and as further revised in accordance with the adjustments set forth in Exhibit A, which has been presented and on file with the City Clerk's office. Exhibit A contains revised budget amounts for the fiscal year 2017-2018 budget, representing approximately 2.5 million, or approximately 1.2% in reductions from the approved Board of Finance budget.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, a couple of items. I make a motion to amend account 4825.
Point of order. Could you make another motion?
Yeah, Alderman Shaw, we're not making any more motions. We're on a motion. You can make an amendment.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. The excitement.
But it is an amendment.
Make an amendment on account 4825.
What page here?
Page 10. On account 4825, Beth El Shelter. Does everybody have it? Page 10. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading. I'm sorry. All right, so the amendment reads, account 4825, Beth El Shelter, as recommended by the Board of Finance, with the following changes. Account 4708000, grant increase to $85,000 for a new department subtotal of $85,000, and a new department total of $85,000.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Is there a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Beatty?
Yes.
Alderman Bevan?
No.
Alderman Casey?
No.
Alderman Gorman?
Yes.
Alderman Genitazio?
No.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Grant?
No.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Shaw?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Vecarelli?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Nine, yes, five, no. Motion passes.
Mr.?
Alderman Shaw?
I'd like to make a further amendment on account 48, I'm sorry, I don't have the page number. It's account 4827, page 92. Literacy Volunteers of Southern Connecticut, as recommended by the Board of Finance, with the following changes. Account 4708000, grant reduced to, to be increased to $5,000 for a new department subtotal of $5,000, and a new department total of $5,000.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Question. When you increase a line item, don't you need a two-thirds vote?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Mayor.
Through you to Alderman Genitazio. If there's an increase from the Board of Finance recommendation, then you need a two-thirds vote for an increase on the expenditure side. If there's a decrease on the revenue side from the Board of Finance recommendation, then you'd need a two-thirds majority for that. This is restoration to the Board of Finance recommendation, at least the last two amendments.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Bevan?
Mr. Chairman, through you to the mayor. The Board of Finance did not approve the current budget that we have in front of us. Is that true?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Bevan. The Board of Finance approved the Board of Finance budget, their recommendations, which you have that book. There have been adjustments that came from the administration that are recommendations to your board that are now in the form of the main motion.
Don't you think the Board of Finance should have had a look at the brand-new budget before we did, like they did the very first budget, to make their corrections like they did off of your original?
Mr. Chairman, through you, through you to Alderman Bevan. This is all very fluid because we are getting day-to-day updates from the state of Connecticut where we are from a fiscal standpoint in terms of revenue. Today, another budget came out from the governor's office, which obviously was not available when the Board of Finance sat back in February to deliberate or to adopt their recommendations. We have to work with the best information that's before us. Milford is not unique in this situation. All 169 towns are putting their, their best estimates forward in adopting their budgets. More than half of cities and towns in Connecticut have already adopted budgets for this next fiscal year. It is likely that every single one of the Connecticut towns and cities will have adopted a budget before the state gives their final numbers. So, we would like to have all the facts, we would prefer to have all the information, but we have to work with the information that we have. It's different information than the Board of Finance had two, three months ago. It's different information that I had when I met with the department heads in October, November, December, and, again, this information's coming out hourly. We have to work with what we got.
Once again, if we're making the decision that the Board of Finance didn't, didn't really see, so it almost comes back to what Alderman Vitale said a meeting or two, and that was, what does the Board of Finance do? If they're not included in this year's budget as we now see it, why are they included prior to here? I mean, they're not having any say on our new budget. I'm just making this statement. I don't need another reply, because I've heard the problems we have with the state over and over and over again. I just would have liked to get a Board of Finance input on the new budget that's before us tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Bevan. The Alder, the Board of Finance, that level of review is another level of oversight, in my opinion. It's a good process because it vets a budget several times, and that's only a good thing. But even though this is an extraordinary year because of what's happening at the state, what's not extraordinary is the same recommendations, the same adjustments that happen after the Board of Finance approves their budget are presented to this board. This is, you know, nothing new. In between the time that the Board of Finance adopts their budget and you vote, there's a whole host of new things that happen, including the fact that... including the fact that our Finance Director checks with the actuaries, checks with our insurance consultants, checks with some of the experts, checks with the department heads, checks with the... They ask 400 to see where we are in the fiscal year, and we give you the best information possible, information that's changed, in some cases dramatically, from what the Board of Finance saw, you know, two, three months ago. So, this is very similar to the process that we go through each and every year. There are many adjustments, many changes, many brand-new recommendations that the Board of Finance never considered because information changes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman. Because of the lack of information I have, I will have to be voting no on this budget.
Alderman Genitazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just like to make a comment. Everyone out here in the audience is realizing a cut. And now, we have the Democratic side of the Board of Aldermen proposing increases. And it does set a bad precedent. You know, we are in very difficult times, and we should respect that across the board. My reason for not agreeing with this budget is due to the mayor. Mayor Blake, you were supposed to give us alternative budgets, 2%, 3%, 5%, and you failed to do that. You put forward this budget without any consideration for the other budgets. You were supposed to show us, demonstrate to us, tonight at this informational meeting, not this budget vote meeting. This budget vote meeting was scheduled for the 25th. Okay? But the mayor decides that he wants to vote the budget through tonight. And what he does is, he gives us another alternative budget before we even saw the first three budgets. So, if you're gonna start putting more money back, you know, I'm starting to get really frustrated with the process here. It's a lack of leadership. You guys are starting to make amendments now. We're not in agreement to this budget. In fact, this budget shouldn't even be voted tonight. It should be voted on the 25th. That's why I'm voting against it. It's an entirety. I've never seen this before. As long as I've been in Alderman, this is my 10th year on this board, and the mayor says, "Oh, well, you could ask questions while you vote." We've never done that in the past. We get the information. If there's any changes, any recommendations, we're supposed to know prior to the vote, not the night of the vote. So, Mayor Blake, you need to really be honest in how you're handling things and how you're conducting city business because it's not professional.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Genitazio. Wow. I thought this process was above board. In fact, you had requested that we change the process a little bit and do a single budget vote. We agreed to the process as you outlined it. But in terms of the various alternative budgets, I thought I was pretty clear throughout. I asked the different departments to give various alternatives so that the Finance Director and I and the administration from the Board of Education can look to see where we were at the time of the budget, when we needed to make a decision. And again, this is about the same time that we adopt a budget each and every year, even though we have other dates reserved. We really have to adopt a budget so that we can get the tax bills printed so that the business of the city can be paid for. There are time restrictions. There are time restraints that need to happen. As I mentioned, our City Finance Director had concerns. I had concerns about extending this too far into the month of May. And we hustled to make sure that you had additional time. We gave you... Each and every Alderman was given our recommendations, and that's all there are. Usually, any given year, we give the recommendations the night of the budget vote. In this situation, we gave it to you the Friday before the budget vote so that you'd have time to look on it, ask additional questions to myself, to the various department heads, not just tonight, but, you know, throughout the course of the several days before.
Mayor Blake, you gave it to us Friday before Mother's Day weekend. The budget was not scheduled to be voted on till the 25th. Okay? So, just save yourself. All right?
If you do look to see how it was advertised with the City Clerk's office, this is the budget vote. This was the budget vote that was scheduled per the City Clerk's office. We could have extended it to another day.
Well, let's vote on it. Are we gonna keep giving money back now? Is that what's going on? You wanna make another amendment? Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Anderson?
I would like to offer an amendment. The budget that we...
Making amendments.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Smith.
Just to summarize, we have voted on amendments, which are both the Literacy Volunteers and Beth L. Shelter. That is amendments to the main motion, which we have not voted on. Alderman Anderson is now proposing a third amendment to the main motion. Am I correct on that, Alderman Anderson?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer the following amendment. To account number 4996, education operations is recommended by the Board of Finance. I would like to restore $684,632, representing the full allocation recommended by the mayor, recommended by the Board of Education and approved by the Board of Finance in the amount of $92,000... I'm sorry, $92,296,582 for a department lump sum total of $92,296,582. Make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'm sorry, amendment and a second. Any discussion? Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know these amendments are gonna come flying off the shelf at this particular point in time. And my vote is not gonna be indicative of anything other than the principle behind everything. I support education. I support Beth L. I support literacy. They're all good things, and they do all good things for this city. But the fact is, we have to make a decision. Why not revert back to the regular budget and pass the regular budget? I'd be in favor of that. But we're gonna go through all of these amendments and get everybody excited. And as was said before, there're gonna be people out there, directors out there, who are not gonna get any money back. And is that fair? Is that fair? But keep the amendments coming. Keep them coming. And I just think it's opaque. It's not... This is not a transparent process. This is not good for us. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, in response, I would say that I would've preferred if we had gone line by line item, but that was not the preference. So, as a result, we did a lump sum and were put in the position of having to offer amendments. But I certainly favor funding the Board of Education at the recommended level this year. And I would imagine that there are many colleagues that would support that as well.
Follow-up, Mr. Chair, please.
Alderman Vitale.
Mr. Chair, through you. And so, if, in fact, doomsday comes from the state, we're gonna be back here making another decision. So, the fact remains, I would say that if we make a cut and we get back more than we thought, we can always restore. I mean, if we get a bigger cut and we can't restore, then we're gonna have to take it on the chin again. But the fact remains, there's gotta be a process here. And the process is, let's go back to that original budget that was recommended by the Board of Finance. Thank you.
Five-minute recess.
Mr. Chairman, I request a real five-minute recess, please.
Five-minute recess. Alderman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are representatives from Milford Public Schools and the Board of Education. And I'd like to give them an opportunity to comment on the original budget. And that was recommended of $91,611,000. And I think they ought to be afforded an opportunity to comment at this time. If somebody would like to respond. Chairman Glennon?
Have a specific question, or...?
Well, you're familiar, I know, with the recommendation of $91,611,000. I'm wondering if you can share with us what impact that particular lump sum might have on educational operations?
Well, our original budget proposal, as you know, was a frugal budget proposal to begin with. And as I said when I presented to you all several weeks ago, we put forward the budget that represents the needs of the school district to keep us moving forward, sustaining the improvements we've made and keeps us moving forward. And, I mean, I haven't changed that premise, that that is the budget that we put forward as representing the needs of the district. It was a small increase, but, you know, and very frugal. But that said, we all recognize that there are significant challenges faced by the state of Connecticut, significant challenges faced by the city of Milford. And as educators, we make do with what we have. We do the best with what we have. So, I, you know, I'm not sure how else to answer that question.
Alderman Shaw.
Thank you, Chairman, through you. Thanks for being here. Just a small comment, and I'm gonna try to suss out, you know, cuts and how that would affect education. But about the state budget. When it became known that the state was in crisis, I know that the mayor and others talked in Hartford very passionately. And one of the things the mayor said, which was right, was that Milford was getting the short end of the stick because it had been so responsible, that it was taking the biggest hit, or one of the biggest hits, because it was able to manage itself so well. It had innovated, and on the city side, can look at innovations at the library, can look at sidewalks. And we've done that with fairly flat budgets. The same thing is true for the school. You've had flat budgets. You've come in last year with a de minimis increase of it all. And I took issue when the Board of Finance cut that even. It seemed to be saying that you can move forward, you can do it with less money, but we're gonna make it harder for you. And I think that's wrong. I think you guys have done an amazing job understanding that there's some declinement in enrollment. You have taken that money, and you've taken the energy, and you've made award-winning schools. My concern is that everybody has to take a hit this year because of the way the city is. There's no escaping that by just saying we're not participating. We all have to participate in the realities that are part of the state. But I worry about next year, too, because this is not just for a single year. So, when I look at these cuts, I look at what it might mean going into next year, and I look at the progress. So, I'm putting you in the spot of it. I think there has to be a cut. I think that's the unfortunate. But I can't have it impact education, our kids. And when I say education, I mean sports. I mean music. I mean art, all the things that make a winning. So, if we were to engage in such a large cut, the $700,000, how would that, or would that, impact learning?
Well, it's difficult for me to really quantify that because, as you know, as a Board of Education, we operate as a group of 10. And it's up to the members of the Board of Education to determine how they're gonna allocate whatever monies that were allowed. I can tell you that historically, when there's a reduction to a Board of Education budget, some of the first things to go would be buildings and grounds projects, things of that nature, that would have... You know, while I feel that the state of our buildings do have an impact on student learning, it's not as a direct impact, say, as a reduction of teachers would have. So, just speaking historically and hypothetically, I would think that that might be one of the first areas that are looked at. But, you know, beyond that, until we really know what we have, what we'll have to work with, it's difficult for me to really say how the Board might approach the reductions to the budget. But I would say, I mean, we would... I would expect that administration would provide us with recommendations that would have the least impact on student learning and that we would give those recommendations serious consideration. Because we look to our administrators, they're our educational leaders. So, it would be my hope that my fellow Board members would take their recommendations under very seriously.
Sorry to put you on the spot. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Alderman Anderson?
Ready for a vote?
Well, you have an amendment on the floor, and it's been seconded. And we're in the discussion with that amendment. Did you want to withdraw that amendment? Or you wanted to go ahead and vote on that amendment?
I would like to have us vote on the amendment.
All right.
Should it not succeed, I have a second amendment I'd like to offer.
Okay. Alderman Anderson, would you like to repeat the original amendment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The recommendation was to fund education operations 4,001, account 4,001-0000, in a lump sum appropriation of $92,296,582. That represents an increase of $684,632 from what was represented in the lump... I'm sorry, in the omnibus budget passed earlier this evening. Thank you.
You heard the amendment, and it was seconded. All in favor? Opposed?
No.
Roll call vote. Madam Secretary, please.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Beatty? Alderman Bevan?
No, because this goes against the mayor's budget.
Alderman Casey?
No.
Alderman Gurman? Alderman Genitazio?
I'm gonna have to say no because if there's a significant cut, more than we anticipate, then what are we gonna do?
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Grant?
My vote is no. And the reason for it is because if we're going to take in, make up for the reduction that we're gonna be receiving from the state, we do need to do it consistently across all departments.
Alderman Hardeman? Alderman Shaw? Alderman Smith?
No.
Alderman Veccharelli? Alderman Vitro?
No.
Alderman Vitale?
For the reasons I stated prior to this, I will vote no.
Five yes, nine no.
Mr. Chairman.
Five yes, nine no. The amendment, as it's read, has failed. Alderman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Colleagues, I'd like to offer another amendment, that is to restore $342,316 to the department subtotal of $91,611,950. That represents a 50% increase to the $91,611,000. Again, I'm looking to restore $342,316. And that represents 50% of what was cut from the Board of Finance recommendation. Make that in the form of a motion. Thank you.
Alderman Anderson, would you like to give a new total as your amendment has been read? read? For the record?
Mr. Chairman, if I may assist, I have the new total.
Thank you. Mr. Eridice?
Please, you may state it, Alderman Anderson.
All right, let me see if I have this correct. Ninety-one million, nine-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand, two-sixty-six.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I heard that we added three-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand, three-hundred-and-sixteen dollars to the amount that was recommended by the Board of Finance. Is that correct?
This is an amendment, so it was, you'll see on Exhibit A, that it's ninety-one million, six-hundred-and-eleven-thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars plus at the...
Okay. Would you kindly repeat the total, please, and I'll make note of it? Thank you.
The amendment offers three-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand, three-hundred-and-sixteen dollars for a new departmental lump sum total of ninety-one million, nine-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand, two-sixty-six. And I so move.
Do I hear a second? We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Roll call vote. Madam Secretary, please.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Beatty?
Yes.
Alderman Bevan?
No, for the same reasons I voted no before.
No.
Alderman Gurman?
No.
Alderman Genotasio?
No.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Grant?
No.
Alderman Hardeman?
Yes.
Alderman Shaw?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Veccharelli?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Again, for the same reasons, I vote no.
Nine yes, five no. Nine yes, five no.
Nine yes, five no. The amendment passes. Alderman Veccharelli?
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing else to add. I suppose those were the three questions that we had asked to be taken out. We've done those three, and I would offer any other, Alderman, for any other subtractions or additions. That's it.
And are there any other amendments to be heard?
Mr. Chairman, I would then make a motion that we would then accept Exhibit A as passed with the inclusion of the three amendments, one on the Board of Ed, one for Bethel, and one for the literacy. Other than that, this has passed in its entirety.
Zero second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Roll call vote. Madam Secretary, please.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Beatty?
Yes.
Alderman Bevan?
No.
Alderman Casey?
No.
Alderman Gurman?
No.
Alderman Genotasio?
No.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Grant?
No.
Alderman Hardeman?
Yes.
Alderman Shaw?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Veccharelli?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
No.
Eight yes, six no.
The vote was eight yes and six no.
Mr. Chairman? I move we stand in recess for the purposes of giving the Finance Director...
Alderman Veccharelli needs to read the original motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve an ordinance establishing a budget for the city of Milford.
Mr. Chairman, before you read that, if we could have the Finance Director first calculate the mill rate and the amount of taxes due.
Yes, sir, Peter. We're in the recess. We are out of recess. Alderman Veccharelli?
Mr. Chairman, an ordinance establishing a budget for the city of Milford for fiscal year 2017, 2018, setting the mill rate and establishing a due date in accordance with the provisions of the state, with the Connecticut general statutes and the Charter of the City of Milford. Whereas, the Board of Finance and the City of Milford has made estimates of the income and the amount of money necessary to appropriate for the expenses of the City of Milford for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2017, and ending June 30th, 2018, and has classified such expenses under appropriate headings, departments, and appropriations, as more fully appears in the proposed fiscal budget submitted to the Board of Alderman in accordance with Article 6, Section 2 of the Charter of the City of Milford. And whereas, the Board of Alderman, having met and conducted a public hearing, has considered and proposed fiscal budget and has made changes therein pursuant to Article 6, Section 3 of the Charter of the City of Milford. And whereas, the Board of Alderman and its deliberations in voting on said budget, has estimated revenues for the 2017, 2018 fiscal year in the amount of two-hundred-and-five-million, seven-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand, and sixty-two dollars, and authorized appropriations for the 2017, 2018 fiscal year in the amount of two-hundred-and, two, two-hundred-and-five-million, seven-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand, and sixty-two dollars. Now therefore, be it, and it is hereby ordained and enacted by the Board of Alderman of the City of Milford as follows. The proposed fiscal budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2017, and ending June 30th, 2018, as amended by the action of the Board of Alderman pursuant to law, is hereby adopted in order to be filed with the City of Clerk. The taxes for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2017, and ending June 30th, 2018, at the rate of twenty-seven-point-seven-nine mills, upon the ratable estimate within the limits of the City of Milford, are hereby laid and levied to meet the expenses of said budget. Said mill rate is set on the predication that it is estimated that three-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand, nine-hundred-and, nine-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand of said levy will be granted for the elderly exemption. State of Connecticut, seven-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars will be granted for a local tax relief program for the elderly. Four-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-four dollars will be granted for a local tax relief program for the veterans, and ninety-seven-point-eighty-five percent of the resulting levy will be collected during the fiscal, fiscal commencing July 1st, 2017, and ending June 30th, 2018. Said taxes shall be paid on the grand list of October 1st, 2016, and shall be due and payable on July 1st, 2017, provided if the taxes of any person shall exceed two-hundred dollars, the first installment thereof not less than one-half of the amount of such taxes shall be due and payable on the first day of July, 2017, and the remainder due payable on the first day of July, of January, 2018. But any taxpayer may pay the total amount of the tax for which he or she is liable at any time when the first installment shall become payable. Such tax rate shall apply to all districts of the City of Milford. The taxes to be raised is one, a hundred-and-seventy-six-million, seven-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, and two-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars. The total appropriations is two-hundred-and-five-million, seven-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand, and sixty-two dollars, and the total revenue is two-hundred-and-five-million, seven-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand, and sixty-two cents. This ordinance...
Sixty-two dollars.
And sixty-two dollars, sorry. This ordinance shall take effect in accordance with the Charter of the City of Milford.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to take a moment to thank the Board for all their good work. I know that there wasn't unanimous approvals in every line item of this budget, but you were all united in your resolve for the city, in the fact that you do care for this, the city and the residents, and are working to make Milford a better place. This budget represents maintaining the services and moving the city forward. This budget represents a tax decrease, a tax cut for all the taxpayers in the City of Milford, you can be proud of that. It represents the second consecutive tax cut that the City of Milford has experienced. We had a tax cut last year, we have a second tax cut this year. This is a prudent budget that accounts for what we are going to lose or stand to lose from the revenue from the state of Connecticut that we have historically enjoyed, so this budget does account for that prospective diminution of state grants that we are hoping that don't occur, but, you know, are planning for a worst case. And I do want to commend you for all the hours that you put in. I do want to thank the Board of Education, our superintendent, the Chair of our Board of Ed, and the various department heads, specifically Peter Eridice and the Finance Department, who really have toiled over this budget, giving you a product, recommending to you adjustments to make this the best possible budget for the 2017, 2018 fiscal year. Thanks for all the hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Alderman Genotasio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I would just like to share with the members of the Board. I know that this is always a very difficult time for us to come together. I think this is where we probably share different values. I just take exception when, you know, we are faced with all of these, all of the bad news coming from the state. I don't know if we manage the expectation by making amendments, putting money back into the budget. And I wasn't intending on voting on the budget tonight from a procedural standpoint. We were told this was an informative meeting, and I wanted to use this time to get better acquainted with what was happening in Hartford, and have more discussions with the city department heads, but unfortunately, that went on deaf ears, and we didn't have the opportunity to do that, so we were forced into voting on this budget as presented. We never had the opportunity to look at the alternative budgets that the mayor keeps mentioning. The mayor put this forward with Peter Eridice, and the Democrats supported it wholeheartedly. I just wish that, you know, being in the minority, we could maybe be invited to the table next time and put forward something that may manage the expectation. I don't know if this is going to manage the expectation. I know that a lot of work went into this, I don't want to disregard that, I want to be honest and truthful, but I just hope that this is the final resolve. And as far as taxes being cut, it's a temporary thing. I don't think that this city is going to be able to manage this expectation moving forward. We took a lot of money to fill the holes, we used money out of our rainy day account, and we've made some cuts along the way. So, I think if anything we should take away from this is that we should get more serious about what we're doing and how we're doing it. I know that we can, as a Board, meet the expectations, but we really need to put party lines aside, we need to be more transparent, and that's my hope for the future. For those reasons, I will not be supporting this budget, but I do want to also thank all the people that worked behind the scenes tirelessly to get their numbers in on time, and hopefully, we won't have to come back and revisit it, but time will tell. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Veccharelli?
I'd like to thank this Board for all of their time and efforts that we put into putting this budget together. I know it wasn't easy. We've had some, we've had some drastic cuts that have been handed to us, and I really think that we've come up with a pretty good budget. It's, it's, I didn't think that we would, you know, not be able to do this without laying off lots of people, but powers to be, we're able to, all of us, look and see, I know we kind of nickel-dimed this budget, and we asked so much from many of the different departments to just to give us a little bit, and the little bit here and the little bit there collectively, you know, it added up to a two-and-a-half-million-dollar reduction in this budget that we just passed, and we have, we still, you know, have other things that we have to make sure that the state doesn't cut us any further, but I just like to thank this Board for being reasonable, and also, we had a respectable decorum, even though this was a very hard, a very hard task we had to do. I would like to thank the mayor for really spending the long time and the dedication to that office, to be able to give the taxpayers of Milford again another tax break, not increasing their taxes, when we've been handed these very severe cuts in our services. So, with that, I also would like to thank all of our departments who worked with the mayor and worked with this Board to try to make the citizens of Milford happy, and still be able to make their departments work. I know it wasn't easy. The Board of Ed came in with a budget that was the lowest budget we've had in eleven years from them, and then to have to make any further cuts on them was, it was just, it was very hard, but understanding that all the departments were giving, they had to give up a little so that we could make this work, and I think we've really done a very good job at making this work, and I really want to say thank you. Thank you all, to all of the departments, to have given up and tried, you know, your very best to make this work. very best to make this work. I truly am very honored to be here, working with all of you. And the City of Milford just, it always amazes me how many fine people that we have that work for the city and volunteer for the city and just make this city what it is today. And I just, I love it here and it's beautiful and every, it seems like every department works very hard and we have a nice, a real nice city here and it's because of all you people. But thank you very much.
Any more discussion? Alderman Vitale?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Again, there are a lot of accolades going out tonight to all the departments and I'd like to thank all the departments for coming in and having good discussion during the budget hearings. And I think, you know, the cuts that were made and hopefully we don't have to revisit, hopefully this is it, but, you know, I hate to be a naysayer, but hopefully, as I say, this is, this is the bottom line that needs to be cut. And I think what happens to responsibility to directors and department heads is when we put a responsibility on the departments to reduce or to make sure that they are within their guidelines and what they put forth, and the fact is that we, when they, when they talk about ma- making ends meet, and it's going to be difficult, and I, I think the key here is that you don't work harder, you work smarter. And I think that's what our departments have done. They've worked smarter. Maybe they were forced into it in some instances, but the fact is that the increase in working smarter helps out the entire city. But again, for all those, and I support the education, I support, I'm on more committees and more boards in this city and I have supported everything and I do support everything, but the fact is because of the principle of, of the issues set forth here and because of the crisis that we're in, I would not be able to vote for this budget. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Well, now it's my turn. I just wanted to take the time to thank all the Aldermen for all their hard work. I know how much work went into it. I've been doing this for quite a few years myself and I, and I appreciate the, the decor that you guys have, have done tonight. It could have been a lot worse. I've seen it a lot worse, but you maintain the great, great degree of excellence and I want to thank the mayor and the Finance Director for all the hard work they've done putting this all together for us. And our final vote is coming up, so let's, let's do it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call vote. Madam Secretary, please.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Beatty?
Yes.
Alderman Bevan?
No.
Alderman Casey?
No.
Alderman Gurman?
No.
Alderman Genotazio?
No.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Grant?
No.
Alderman Hardeman?
Yes.
Alderman Shaw?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Veccharelli?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
No.
Eight-six. Mr. Chairman?
Vote is eight-six. Budget passes. Thanks you again, everyone. Have a good night. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.